All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This regular workshop meeting. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Four items on it. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Is there any discussion? Here in no one in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's start with number ones, the update on the wastewater treatment system. Dr. Wood.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. We also have members of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, some of whom are here already, others may be joining us over the next few minutes as they come in. The reason why we invited the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee to join us is because the discussion that we're having regarding information on your sewer system and the sewer collection system, we wanted to share it at the same time with both. For those members of the advisory group who are not here, we will also give a briefing to them at the next meeting. Over the last several years, this city council and your predecessors have invested in a major system that we call the LTS. That's the Land Application System, where we have 7,400 acres and we have a very innovative way of handling our wastewater. Instead of discharging it into a river, which many communities do, or deep well injection, which is done in some parts of the country, we have a spray irrigation system. What we wanted to do tonight is to begin a series of probably three, maybe four workshops that will spread from now until January, February, to really give you an in-depth understanding of your system and where it really is in the life of its capacity. This is going to be presented by Greg and by Wally. I'm going to ask Pete Dever to come up and take my seat. But we want this to be one where it's not just you listening, but if, as the information is presented, feel free to ask questions. Many of your questions, I think you're going to find are going to be answered, but we do want this to be interactive. So at this time, I'm going to recess and ask Pete to come up, and I'm going to ask Greg if he will make the presentation. Pete, please.
That was the plan, yes. I'm not properly dressed to be sitting here.
Well, good evening. What I will add to that is that I recall a few meetings back that Mayor Protem Lozera asked us for an update regarding our wastewater system, and more to the point, he was interested in getting an update concerning our capacities, as Richard just said. And so tonight, what we're going to do is, we're going to do a bit of a review of our treatment system, which consists of a collection system and treatment systems. We're going to examine the capacities for those systems, and then we're going to highlight challenges that we see in those systems. And because we're going to highlight some challenges, like Dr. Wood said, in the future meetings, what we're going to come back and do is outline potential solutions for those challenges, and then talk about costs associated with those potential solutions. So let's get started. Of course, our treatment facility is the wastewater LTS, the spray irrigation system. It is permitted for average annual flow of nine MGD. In other words, nine million gallons per day on an annual average basis is what it's permitted for. We also have capacity reserved in the advanced wastewater treatment facility on Cap Lejeune. We have one million gallons reserved in that plant also. So that gives us a total capacity of 10 million gallons, and we'll talk a little bit more about these facilities in just a second. When it comes to our collection system, we have over 230 miles of gravity sewers. We have 46 city-owned pump stations, and those pump stations pump through about 42 miles of force main, pressure pipe. And there is a map showing you our system. The blue area outlines where our collection system is located, and what you see there is that most all of that is directed to the wastewater LTS. There is a little blue area right here. That is, we call the Popular Branch Basin. That is a gravity sewer along Piney Green Road, and then that, that gravity sewer discharges to the Popular Branch Pump Station, which we own, and then that pump station pumps through Onwassa lines to an Onwassa pump station that in turn pumps it on to the base. And then from, once it gets to the base, it winds its way down to the treatment plant that you see there. And so let's talk about our LTS, the one that we own. We completed an upgrade to that facility in 2010. We upgraded from six million gallons per day to nine million gallons per day. And one of the big things that we did was, we added this, this storage lagoon right here. That's called the South Storage Lagoon. It has a capacity, I think I'm right in saying this, of about 320 million gallons. Then we also have right here, this is the East Storage Lagoon, and this is the West Storage Lagoon. Everything that gets pumped into our irrigation system has to eventually work its way to the West Storage Lagoon. Then also what you'll see is, these little treatment trains right here, these are aerated trains, that's where the wastewater essentially gets treated. It flows into those basins, and it's aerated, which stimulates microbial activity to break down the wastewater. And those little dots you see there are the aeration devices. And as you know, we were, we have replaced some of those already with the Blue Frog units, and we're going to be replacing more. So let's talk about, you know, I just said it's permitted for nine MGD. Let's talk about what it's seen since the upgrade. What you see there is a plot of the, the average daily flow on a yearly basis from 2010 to 2016. In other words, in 2010, we took each daily flow that occurred 364 days, we added together, and then we divided by 364, and we came up with an average. And so in 2010, on average, on a daily, on an average basis, we saw about 4.9 MGD going into the plant. And in 2016, we saw about 5.3 million gallons per day, MGD. And when I saw this, I was a little surprised, because I thought about all the development that has been going on in Jacksonville, and we'll talk about that in just a second. But from a capacity standpoint, in 2010, we were only using about 54% of that nine MGD. And in 2016, based upon that number there, we're using about 59% of the capacity. And again, from 2010 to 2016, that was an increase of about 380,000 gallons per day, and that just sort of perplexed me. So I went back and I had staffed to see how much was permitted during that period. And the amount that was permitted was 1.2 million gallons. And what you have to realize about that number, though, is, that's a number derived from factors that the state makes you use when you're seeking a permit for new flow, and they're fairly conservative. And also, some of that flow probably has not yet made it into the system just yet. They're not finished constructing the facility that was permitted. But if you think about it, if even just half of that, which I think we could probably say half of it is, has made it into the system, does indeed make it in the system, then we're still ahead of the game. And so what we tend to think is that the reason that we're only seeing 380,000 gallons per day is because we've been making significant inroads in eliminating infiltration and inflow. We have completed, over that period, three capital projects to try to eliminate the flow of extraneous water into our system. And Pete, on his, on a daily basis, also, he, he finds problems and corrects them if he and his staff can. So what we think's happening is that, you know, while the permitted flow is going up, what's happening is, the, the extra water coming into the system is, is being taken out, and so there's, you know, they've, they've sort of made the, the amount of permitted flow less than what it really should be.
Question for you. Fifteen was five, 5.7 or so, or so as I recall. Go back to a couple slides, if you would. Yeah, what's, what do you think? Do you track, you know, is that attributed to a heavy rainfall year?
Probably.
And then, you know, I would have thought, well, we've had some, I'm, I'm sure you'd probably look at rainfall in comparison to that to help you rely on some of that I and I elimination. I'm just curious.
Well, let's go there. What you see there, above those average numbers are, you know, again, it's an average. But in, in those years, we had a range of flows, and we had flows upwards of 15 million gallons on certain days. And so, you know, before we pat ourselves on the back and we say we've done a great job in terms of I and I, we have to look at this number and say that you're always fighting I and I. And so what does I and I do to your plant? Well, this is a schematic that I, I developed that sort of talks to our, our LTS. And, you know, what happens is, raw wastewater comes into the plant, it goes through what we call the headworks, where the, the inert solids that, you know, don't break down are screened out, grit is taken out of the system, and grease is taken out of the system, then it goes to those aerated lagoons, and then we put it in the storage lagoons, and hopefully we don't put them in the storage lagoons too long, and then we pump it out into the forest where we irrigate. But when it rains, that wastewater flow goes up. And so what you theoretically want to do is make it go up as it goes through the plant. You want it to go, go through that plant at a similar rate, and you want to possibly spray longer, spray more fields than you were spraying, so that you, you don't accumulate wastewater. But typically, what happens when it rains in town, it's raining out at the LTS, and so we don't get the spray. And so what happens is, we start accumulating wastewater in our storage lagoons. And that is the, the challenge that we have at the LTS, is managing our storage. And so I'm going to take that theoretical and show you an actual. This is a plot of the water surface in the West Storage Lagoon from September of last year through mid-September of this year. And what you see at the top is a rust-colored line, solid line, that represents the top of the lagoon. The dashed line represents the level we are allowed to go to under our permit, and the distance between those two is two feet, and that's called the freeboard. So our permit says that we're not supposed to go into the freeboard area. I think the last time we went into the freeboard area, we ended up having to do an upgrade to our, our plant. And so at the bottom, you will see there, the blue, of course, is the water surface. At the bottom, what you see are little vertical lines, that's rainfall. Each little line represents rainfall on, on a given day. And off to the right is the scale for that rainfall. It goes from zero to six inches. And so what I'd like for you to notice is that for about the last, I don't know, third or half of the year, which is the summer, our, our lagoon level was climbing. And in the, and then what I want you to do is look down at the bottom and see all those days of rain. That was an unusually wet summer for us. And so, again, when it's raining in town, it's typically raining at the LTS, and we can't spray. And, except, you will notice that there's a lot of rain at the very right, right side of that graph, and there's also the level was going down. That's because we did what's called emergency spraying. We weren't sure what Hurricane Irma was going to do, so we were a little concerned about that. We were pretty much near the, the, our permitted level, and Irma was on its way. So Pete made the decision that we need to emergency spray. And so what emergency spraying means is that we spray when it's wet, when it's raining. We spray sometimes 24/7. The only, I guess I'm correct in saying this, the only thing that, our only condition when we're emergency spraying is that we have to watch to make sure that none of the wastewater is running off into creeks and streams. And so that, we got, over this past year, pretty near the top of our permitted level, and then we had to enter emergency spraying because we had even more rain on the way. And then the other one over to the left is when we were concerned about Hurricane Matthew. And you can see, once we started emergency spraying, it started going down. But, and, but what you'll say is, well, wait a minute, it's, it goes down, but then it goes back up. That's because what we were doing was, we were transferring wastewater from the other lagoons into that lagoon so we could spray it out. So I show you that to just point out that managing our storage is, is, is definitely a challenge, and it, it takes some, you know, some, some knowledge and, I guess, gut instinct.
The 98% of that is William. I just support William on this.
Yes. So, again, when it comes to, you know, the average daily flow, we're in good shape when it comes to the state code. The state code says that you really don't have to worry about planning for your future wastewater needs until you get to about 80% of your hydraulic capacity, which for us means 7.2 MGD, and in 2016, we were at 5.9. And then, before you exceed 90% of your hydraulic capacity, you have to have your permits in place and plans in place for whatever it is you're going to do to accommodate your, your future wastewater flows. And for us, that's 8.1 MGD. But when, we tend to feel like that our real capacity is a function of several things. It's a function of how much hydraulics we can push through that plant, but more importantly, it's a function of storage volume, and storage volume related to how often we can irrigate. Again, we go back to the graph, and you can see, we were getting pretty close to our storage capacity. And in fact, in, in, in 2000, or from September of last year to September of this year, we lost almost three months of spring, and that's what that graph showed. It showed from September to September. And if you threw in those emergency spray days, we would have lost more than three months of spring. So again, it is, it is a challenge that we're faced with. And I want to come back to the, our, our other means of treatment. Again, we have a million gallons reserved in the advanced wastewater treatment facility on the base. Right now, the sewer directed at that plant comes from the Piney Green area. Again, it goes through the Popular Branch Pump Station, and then it pumps through Onwassa lines that get it onto the base, and from there, it makes its way to the plant. And also, in our area, Onwassa has reserved 200,000 gallons of capacity, mostly to serve existing needs. So now, let's talk a little bit about our sewer collection system.
Be back up just a second here. We're paying Onwassa a, a share of their charges incurred, they incur by Cap Lejeune, right?
Right.
Have we exceeded the minimum in terms of our flow?
Our flow, our flow is, is, is very low at this point.
So in other words, I guess the question that I have, would it be less expensive for us to divert some of our existing flow through, what's that pump station down in Northwest, North Creek?
From Brenmar.
From Brenmar.
To the base?
Well, those are some of the things that we're going to probably talk about next meeting. We have discussed that, we've discussed diverting wastewater, and we tend to think that's an option that we should bring before you.
All right.
We play, we pay an availability fee to Onwassa?
Yes.
We're paying for future.
Well, to be able to reserve that capacity, so it's a share of the cost of them building that connection. And one of the considerations, though, is the rate that the base charges for treatment of sewer, which is higher than what it costs us to treat sewer. And that's, that's something that we need to be discussing with the base as time goes on, is how do you compute those rates?
Yes. And, and the availability fee that we pay, as our sewer usage goes up, the availability fee comes down, because we're paying, we're actually paying for real treatment, and we're paying, you know, based on flow to the plant. When we talk in terms of our sewer collection system, this is another schematic that I developed, and essentially what it shows is that most all the sewer, except for the sewer out in the Piney Green area, on this side of the river works it way, works its way to our main pump station, and then it is pumped out to the LTS. This is sort of a repeat of that larger map we showed earlier. And then, on the other side of the river, we have a pump station called the Brinson Creek Pump Station, and everything from over Yopp Road area where the, the Lowe's and the Walmart is, on in, work through Georgetown, works its way to that pump station, and that pump station pumps through the same line that the main pump station pumps through. And then, out in the southwest area, we have what's called the Southwest Pump Station that also pumps into that same line and sends wastewater out to the LTS. Again, off to the right is the Popular Branch Pump Station that pumps through Onwassa lines to the base. And again, we have about 230 miles of gravity sewers, 46 pump stations that pump through 42 miles of force mains. And the map you see there is a map of the locations of the pump stations. They're the little boxes that are yellow with a little P in them, and then the dashed, sort of burgundy-ish, rust-colored line are the force mains that they pump through. And those solid green lines are gravity sewers that are 10 inches or larger. And so that, I liken that to the backbone of our system. We have lots of little lines, smaller lines, that come off of that, that would fill up that page if we put them up there. And so when we think of our collection system, we think of our collection system in terms of basins or sewer sheds. And so the west, best way I could describe a basin is sort of like a funnel. You start out with a few sewer lines up here, and then they work their way down to a small pump station that pumps it on down the line, until all the sewer eventually works its way to the bottom of the funnel where the big pump station's located. And our basins are named after the big pump stations at the bottom of those funnels. And so here is the Henderson Basin. This gives you an idea of all the pump stations that are located in that basin. We have one that's a really far outlier that has a little bit of gravity sewer that discharges to it, Country View. It discharges into a gravity sewer that eventually works its way to the Commons Pump Station. The Commons discharges into another sewer that eventually works its way to one of those large diameter mains, and then on to the Henderson Pump Station. So that's a schematic of a basin. And when we think of, we think of capacity when it comes to a basin, the ultimate capacity is how much that pump station at the bottom of the funnel can pump. But I also think of it as, there's a lot of little capacities within the system. You know, how much can your gravity sewers within that basin carry? And how much can those other little pump stations pump? And when we have problems with capacity, where we typically see it, particularly if we've got a lot of extraneous flow into the system, is in the larger trunk sewers and at our pump stations. And so to sort of give you an idea of the capacity issues that we're, we, we believe that we have, we have run some models using the hydraulic model of our sewer collection system that we have. And right here, again, I'm showing you the big trunk sewers and the basins, and right here, this is a run of current day flows during a non-rain period, when it's dry. And you have to look real hard, but right there, you see a little, one of the trunk mains is red. That's in the Ellis Basin, and that's just upstream of the Ellis Pump Station. And what the model says is that that sewer runs full. Nothing coming out of the manholes, nothing overflowing, but the, that sewer line is taxed. So we ran it again for a, a, a rainfall event, a rainfall that's supposed, supposed to only happen like once every five years. And in this particular case, the five-year storm we chose was one that was, it occurred over six hours, and for a six-hour storm, that means, when you're talking in terms of every five years, that means a rainfall of about four inches. And so again, this is the only issue we have. Not coming out of the manholes, according to the model, but it's still flowing full. So then we run it, we, we've run it for a 10-year storm. And a 10-year storm, we chose a six-hour storm, and that means about almost five inches of rainfall over six hours. And now you can see that the map's starting to light up. It's, we've got system-wide issues with sewers being full, and you'll see a lot of the little circles. There are a lot of little circles. You'll see some yellow circles, and you'll see a few red circles. And what those circles are, are, they, they're identifying manholes where we've got issues. The yellow circles mean that wastewater, the pipe is full, and wastewater's starting to rise up into that manhole. The red circles mean that theoretically wastewater's flowing out of the manhole. Well, that, again, this is a model, that typically does not happen, and the reason for that is, Pete, knowing where these, if, these areas are, has done such things as raise the risers of some of these manholes to give us, you know, a little more storage, and he's done such things as bolt down the tops of the manholes, so that when the wastewater rises up, it doesn't push the top off of the, push the lid out of the manhole so that wastewater flows out. But nonetheless, you know, what this map says is, during a 10-year rainfall event, we've got capacity issues. We've got a lot of sewers flowing full. And then we ran it for a 25-year storm, and you can see it only gets worse. And you might say, well, you know, rainfall that only happens every 10, 25 years, do we really need to be worried about that? Well, I would say preventing overflows is the right thing to do, and on top of that, the state of North Carolina says that you're not supposed to have an overflow anytime. But, you know, when you start talking about 50-year storms, 100-year storms, maybe in the 25-year storm, it becomes, I think, a, a, a risk versus reward kind of question. Do we real, do we want to spend the money necessary to accommodate, you know, a 100-year storm, realizing that everything's going to be underwater if we have a 100-year storm? And I think that's a, a decision for council, and that's some of the stuff that we'll talk about next time. But I will tell you that when we are thinking about these basins and what we should do, one of the things that we think about is, are these basins still developing? Is there a growth coming to these basins? Or are they a basin that is mature, that's, you know, that's not much new development will occur? Because, and, and what you see there are the basins that we tend to feel are pretty mature, the Brenmar, Ellis, Main, and Brinson Creek. And when we're looking at these basins, you know, often we think to ourselves, the best way to attack these basins might be, one of the ways to attack it, might be to just concentrate on I and I, trying to eliminate infiltration and inflow. But when you get to the basins with higher growth potential, such as the Henderson, Brookview, Southwest, and Popular Branch, then you start saying, well, do I need to maybe add capacity while I'm also attacking I and I? Do I just need to add capacity? So those are some of the questions that you ask yourself as you're planning strategy for these basins, and these are some of the things we'll talk about next time. But in the meantime, what I like to do is, these are the two basins that are currently feeling development pressure. The Henderson and Brook. The Henderson and Brookview, which, you know, get the, get from the flow from the Commons down Western Boulevard extension all the way to Gum Branch Road. You know, we're still seeing development out there. So what I'd like to do is just zoom in on those. Again, this is the 10-year storm. And you can see that Henderson has some issues, particularly in that main trunk sewer that works its way down to the Henderson Pump Station. And, you know, that's important because what I've also added to this map are the, the darker shade purple, which are tracks that have yet to develop. So we've got issues with a 10-year storm and yet our basin's not fully developed out. So it's something we need to think about, you know? And then on top of that, we have some areas that we believe are going to be looking to us for sewer in the future. As a matter of fact, we've had conversations with some of the folks in some of those areas that are identified as future about providing sewer to them. And so, you know, do we say no? Or, or do we try to provide an avenue to be able to provide sewer to them? And again, here it is for the 25-year storm. And so to re-summarize what I just said is that we have, we have concerns. The basin's still developing. There are about 330 acres of undeveloped land within that basin. And then there's another 680 that we believe could be potential areas that we serve. And those two things taken together represents about, this is a rough swag, but a swag nonetheless, about 700,000 gallons per day. And the same thing for Brookview. Here's your 10-year storm. This right here is the, let's see. This sort of comes through the heart of Brookview. And then here's our Brookview Pump Station. And that's the 10-year storm. Here's the, you know, the 25-year storm. And again, just like the Henderson, we have undeveloped tracks and we have other undeveloped areas that aren't quite within the sewer shed that we could potentially serve in the future. And that represents about 1.1 million gallons per day. So I've talked a little bit, but basically, you know, during this meeting, you know, we've talked about our storage challenges at the L T S. We've talked about our capacity issues during wet weather. And we've concentrated a little bit on the developing basins. And we've done that because it's important. You know, growth depends upon capacity, capacity of sewer, also streets and water. And, you know, without growth, there's no increasing tax base. And so because it's important, in our future meetings, as Dr. Woodruff said, we're going to come back and we're going to talk about these issues a little more in detail and what some potential solutions for them are, and then costs.
About the, the, the line going out to the L T S through, to the government's, yeah, government center area?
Oh, the, that's one of the things we're going to talk about in the future and how that sort of fits into this picture. And we'll, we'll bring you cost of that project. The pro, that project is pretty much designed. I think we've gotten just about every permit we need. And so we'll be talking to you about that and wanted to give you one, give you an update on that also.
So Greg, you would say that your biggest challenge is, is rainfall, storage and spraying?
Yes.
Is what we've been hearing over and over again.
I would.
And even with that redundancy line, that's not going to actually help anything.
Well, the redundancy line, if, if we do that project, it would, recall that, you know, as we work through the core of our system, we have capacity issues. And this, I guess what you call redundant line, it has a, it, it, it's, it's long-term plan is to serve as sort of an interstate around that core of the city so that it can intercept anything that's coming from the north to provide capacity for future growth while at the same time taking some of the pressure off of that internal or that core system that's been there for, you know, for a lot of years.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions. So you've modeled these five and 10-year things and you highlighted your red areas via the model. Is there any way you've gone back or is there any way to know that these areas were actually strained during previous events? Or how do you?
Well, um.
Do you verify that?
When, when, when we, when we had the model calibrated, one of the things I did, Pete may remember this, was I said, okay, here's what the model says. I want you to tell me if, do you believe this is true? And tell me if you think that the lines are stressed here or not. And Pete went and circled those things and we had a pretty good match.
So Pete verified it, that's not.
You also, if I can.
Yeah.
You also verify those by looking at the hours of pump runs.
Yes, so you can see historically that, that was the case.
It's actually a combination of Pete and his staff knowing where spills are occurring, where manholes are backing up, but it's also based upon runtimes of various pumps.
Okay. Also, I, it's been so long since we had to allocate sewer ourselves. What is an allocation for a, a single-family home? Can you remember what it is? The gallons per day?
It's a, for a, for a three-bedroom home, it's 360 gallons per day. For a two-bedroom home, it's 240 gallons per day.
So you're saying a two-bedroom home is going to run 6,000 gallons and a three-bedroom home is going to run about 10,000 gallons? Well, I can see that's part of your allocation reality mismatch. Because, I mean, my home's what, you know, 5,000. What's an average? Do you know what an average home across the city?
Well, I did, not long after I got here, I actually did a little bit of a study of the Carolina Forest area and I tried to use water records with some other things. And, you know, what I found was, again, we say from a, from a regulatory standpoint, a, a three-bedroom home is 360 gallons per day. What I was finding was that what was being generated was about half of that.
So, yeah.
So half to three-quarters of that.
Another thing I could point out, because of being on the water sewer, you're not seeing a big increase because we have at least 1,000 homes with water turned on that nothing goes through. And probably another thousand that aren't turned on at all. So if we were at full capacity with our existing residential, commercial base, we would probably be up 15, 16% just on that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can see how, because really the, the development since 10 has been so much commercial.
Yeah.
That, that's not, unless it's a restaurant, that's not a big user.
Yeah, I think in 10, we were coming off of the residential room and we were moving into the commercial room.
The commercial, like I mean.
A lot of restaurants and grocery stores.
Well, and then small shops, they don't use any, I mean, these 500, 600 or more, so it's, uh.
And our growth is limited anyways. I think it's not even a capacity issue, it's more of the storage. And that's where the stress comes into play is because of all the rain that you have and meeting those red lines and the ability to spray. Most of our troubles, without natural replacement of lines and handling issues as you, you described. But in terms of the whole capacity, I think the nine serves us well, well, nine plus one. But it's handling the issue at the L T S and our ability to spray when we need to and hold when, when things get tough. And that's where I think Pete feels most of the pressure is when we're having continuous rain days and you have no place to put the rainfall. And then you can't spray during those times because it's already wet out there.
But that's where every cloud has a silver lining because you can fall back on your emergency spraying.
Also remember though, that in order to have growth, it's not, and that's one of the things we hope that was brought across. I thought, first of all, Greg did a very nice job in the presentation. I also appreciated the comments that Pete and Wally made, that was very well done. But the, it's not just the plant, it's not just the plant capacity. You've got to get it to the plant. If many of you, before I got here, many of you will remember that there was a subdivision that came to the city right next to Carolina Forest. And the city said, we don't have any capacity. Now, whether that was lack of capacity in the delivery system of the basin or there was lack of capacity out at the plant, doesn't really matter. That subdivision was never built. I don't think so. It was built. And that subdivision today has 200 or 300 homes that sit immediately adjacent to your city limits. And they sold those houses on the basis, get all the city services and pay no city taxes. We can show you a picture of the sign. And we have nobody to blame, if you pardon the bluntness, but ourselves. We weren't ready to accept that development. Now, currently, we are not having a demand for single-family homes. Will that change tomorrow morning, three years from now? Who knows? What we do know, though, is that, and that's why we're, we're giving you these sessions to help decide what do we do? Because if the tax base is going to grow, which is important to holding down taxes, we have to be ready to deliver services. At the present time, I think you, you have a good overview of your system. I think a couple of, of, of comments that need to also be made is look at your staff on your far wall over there. These are the people who get the work done every day. Since William took over with Pete managing the L T S, the land site, you remember the field trips that we took and how the dead trees were out there? Things were, there was no evapotranspiration going on, the undergrowth was everywhere. If it ever gets dry enough, we want to take you out there for another field trip. And you're going to find that these people have done a phenomenal job of daylighting. That means cutting all of the laterals and the sprays. They've done a great job of mowing. You've given them the extra personnel and, and equipment to do this and they have fulfilled what you asked them to do. So Pete, I'm going to ask you to introduce your folks to the council.
Um, everybody knows Joe. Joe's not one of mine, but Joe is a, is a good confidant to have. And Miss I used to, Chairman of Water Advisory. Next to her is William Brown, is our Chief Wastewater Plant Operator. Uh, and then next to him is Gavin Bosson, who's our Lines Maintenance Supervisor. And then next to him is Percy Cephus, who is our Backflow Grease Trap Cross Connection Inspector.
I'd like to ask you to join me and give him a round of applause. Now, what Pete didn't tell you, in addition to being a professional golfer, Joe actually runs our water plant. Mr. Bitter, I believe you had a question.
Well, it's more or less a conundrum. You like that word?
It's a very good word. You drive an F-150, I can tell.
I do, I do.
He brought up about growth being good for increasing the tax base. But the other side of this, you pointed out that some of these areas, aside from the land application, where we have sufficient capacity, that growth in some of these basins will force an upgrade on some of these lines. Now, the conundrum is, is it worthwhile to increase the tax base by spending X amount of dollars here at the same time? The expense for upgrading those sewer lines. Hopefully, you're going to be on the plus side, but that's something to, if you could model that, that's something interesting.
Well, it is, and I want to also clarify, not, not all growth is a positive thing for a city. And let me explain that. In residential development especially, there is a spectrum of what I've always called the, the spectrum of tax base versus expenditures. You have tax-negative structures, you have tax-neutral structures, you have tax-positive structures. So for example, if you live in a home of a certain value, you're tax-negative. Because you pay your city property tax, you pay the other taxes, but the services that you require are greater in expense than the taxes you pay. The tax-neutral is obviously, if it costs X, you pay X. And then the tax-positive is when you are in a home that is creating more revenue than the demand. Now, that model, you know, if you looked at everything from school to social services to everything else, you know, it's, it's a dismal picture. What I would say is we need to make sure that the growth we are encouraging is as close to neutral to positive as possible. You know, Randy Thomas, he can tell you, you can go broke selling items at a discount. You can go broke selling things that cost more than you're able to get the revenue for.
You make it up with volume.
And so when we look, and, and I'm going to be quite frank with you, we've talked to several developers recently who want subdivisions and they're selling homes that in my opinion are going to be tax-negative. And I'm not, as your manager, I'm not going to be recommending that we do a lot to encourage tax-negative residential. Where we need to encourage what is almost always tax-positive is commercial. We need to do everything we can to build the city of Jacksonville for commercial retail where we are the shopping center of this region. That is where you get most of your tax-positive. But again, these are the things that we will try to explore and present data to you over the next three, four, or five months. This is not, you know, we're going to meet today, two weeks later, we're going to have another one. Two weeks later, we're going to ask you to, to vote on some stuff. We're a long way away from that. What we feel, though, is because of the importance of this discussion on the future of this city and the finances that we're going to have to take, we need to give you as much education as possible, answer as many questions as possible. So again, a month away, we're going to be ready with another one. Maybe six or eight weeks before we're ready with another one. But this is going to be a series of workshops. That's also one of the reasons why I certainly appreciate the chairperson of the Water and Sewer being here tonight and why we had hoped that more of them would be here. Because we want you to hear these reports together. Final word is this, why did we not call a joint session? Well, because you get into advertising and quorums and opening and all of that. But we did invite all of the water and sewer folks to be here tonight. And again, Jill, we appreciate your presence and we hope that many of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee members are watching on G10. Questions before we close this session out? Pete?
Something I'd like to, a couple of things. I agree, Greg did an excellent job on this presentation. Um, he's obviously put a lot of work into it. I'm going to kind of give it to you from an operator's perspective, just some things. William brought this up to my attention one time when we were, one of our many trips around the lagoons, mangin' planning. The South Lagoon at full capacity is 365 million gallons. That is one year's worth of storage if we diverted Bryn Mawr to the base. That gives us one year's worth of storage. That's huge. One of the other things I'd like to remind council, well, not necessarily remind council, but say, when we enter emergency spraying, we have to notify the state. And had it not been for William keeping a pulse on the, on the influence coming in and what we were putting out, we started out at, at eight, eight hours a day. We ended up going 24 hours a day to get the lagoon levels to where we could stop and manage them and take a break. And had it not been for him, we'd still, could very well be emergency spraying. So that's, that's very, that's very important. And when we talk to the state, the very first question they ask me when they call them is, what's your I N I percentage? And, and that's something that's going to come back and, and get us if we don't, if we don't start addressing it. Um, and lastly, and this is just my opinion, the 36-inch force main that is subject to go through Burton Park, the Parkwood Regional, that might take the pressure off of Henderson Basin, but it doesn't take the pressure off L T S. You're still going to have the same amount of flow coming. So then, and that gives us two more, another force main to worry about, more stuff at Headworks to worry about, but you're still going to have that same amount of flow coming. So.
I have a question.
And I, I don't mean to sound rude or abrupt, but I'm giving you an operator's perspective.
We appreciate that.
Richard, I N I is part of our C I P, ongoing C I P. Is it adequate or does that need to be elevated?
Well, I think the, let me answer that maybe kind of indirectly. We've done a good job with I N I. We've done a good job with INI. There's no question, if you looked at the charts that Greg showed, we don't know whether we've diverted a half a million or a million. What we do know, though, is the staff is out there every day looking for INI. Sometimes we do major projects, sometimes we stay off a year. We need to make sure, though, that if not every year in the CIP, at least every other year in the CIP, that we are doing major half-million-dollar improvements to the system. INI is not ever going to go away. What we do know, though, is that the newer subdivisions typically don't have as much INI as the older subdivisions. Why is that? The length of the pipe. Every time you eliminate, you know, if you put in a 20-foot length of pipe versus five-foot length of pipe, now those of you who went to NC State, figure real quickly, five foot divided into 20 feet, how many joints did you just eliminate? 30 joints, that's right. But the point I'm making is, we basically have an old system. And when you have an old system, every one of those ring heads, when they go in, they eventually leak, they eventually get cracked. So INI is not something that's ever going to go away. And it's something like Pete said, every, at least every other year, we need to be budgeting INI. Why not every year? First of all, it's just the reality, we only have so many Indians that we work with. You know, if you gave us $3 million, it still is something that people have to, it's not a function of just money. It's can you get the projects done? So the answer is, we're doing a good job, but it's not a job that's ever going to go away. And every year, when you look at your CIP, we need to be making sure INI is being addressed. Now Pete, you agree with that or not?
Yeah, I agree, it needs to be addressed. I mean, I just wish there was a way we could do it every year, but it's just not physically possible.
It's also not...
When you said that the state asks you, what do you tell them?
I did a three-year comparison, and depending on the percentage of return to the system, it could range anywhere from 43% to 56%, based on the numbers that I calculated.
So you're saying half the water, half of the water flowing in is INI?
Potentially, yes. And this, now this was during, we've had an extremely wet two or three years. And I took numbers that we sent to the state every month. And if you run those numbers and compare them, depending on what percentage you want to return to the system on a monthly basis, it can anywhere from 43 to 56%. Sir?
All the land we have at the, at the site out there, is it cheaper to create additional storage during periods of high inflow than it is to try to eliminate all infiltration?
The problem with additional storage is you're still going to have to get it out.
Exactly.
So eventually, when we get, we'll have more in storage than we can physically get out if we don't get, if we don't figure out a way. The real answer is figure out how to get more out.
In a heavy water situation, you're, with pollution by dilution, it's relatively cleaner sewage than it is when you're flowing normally.
It is. I think William and I agreed on this. We've had several conversations, again, riding around those lagoons, talking about stuff. The solution, in our opinion, is not more storage, the solution is more irrigation land. If we can, if we could find more ways to irrigate and spread it out, spread the load out, and maybe work with the state on easing some of the handcuffs in our permit, we, gives the land more time to recover, it eliminates the ponding and the potential runoff. So if we had more land to spray on, we could extend those cycles of, the spray cycles, and not come back as frequently as we did, as we do.
Well, the good news is, I saw a news report that said that we're in a La Niña cycle that's forming, and it will be a drier than normal winter.
That would be great. Well, the forecast does say just 1% of rain tomorrow, Mayor, so... You know, the last thing that I would also like to remind you is, part of managing the LTS is the forestry program. And you will also recall that you have provided the equipment for them to not only mow and so forth, but to frack the land. By fracking the caprock out there, breaking it up, in other words, you have increased percolation. It is a process, William and his people, Pete and all the folks here are to be commended, they think out of the box every day. Eventually, and you're going to see this in the solutions section when we talk to you probably at the next meeting. And that is, if we can divert more to the base, maybe we can get more from the base. Because what you're going to, what you saw today is that we have a million-gallon capacity at the base, but the question is, how much of that are we using? If you think of it this way, you have a child who comes to you and says, I need $20 for school. 10 minutes later, they come back and say, I need $20 more for school. Well, what happened to the $20? Well, I haven't spent it yet, but now I want $20 more. If we're going to get more from the base, I think part of the strategy has to be, let's start using the million gallons that the base has already given us. Because once you use it and it helps them, maybe they will give you more. But overall, you've seen what you're looking at is a challenge. We're going to have to address INI, we're going to have to address more use of the base. We're going to have to address how we issue and improve the two basins where we're having the growth. And we're going to have to continue to find ways to get more through the system out at the LTS.
Do we have a redundancy pumping at the LTS?
Yes, sir. We have six effluent pumps all over staged in the West Lagoon. If we don't get it to the West Lagoon, we can't send it to the forest.
You know, I was just thinking, you know, we'd better that emergency pumping, but what happens if we have a malfunction at that end?
Well, there's multiple pumps.
Well...
It's in the CIP.
Yeah, there is in the CIP for the South Lagoon to receive an effluent pump station, but that's going to be extremely expensive. The other things that William and I discussed is, if we lose commercial power and we need to run effluent pumps, we would have to bring in a tractor-trailer generator, kind of like they did for Hyde County when that line got hit. And it would only run one pump at a time.
Do you have that contingency in place?
That's what I was wondering, you know, if you have a major hurricane where you lose the power and you've, and here's your, everything is filling in, you know, how do you, how do you get it out?
To answer your question, Mayor, we have that contingency in place, provided no one else has already spoke for that generator. When I called them before Irma and Matthew, we would have had to have ordered it and paid for it, regardless if we needed to have it on-site to guarantee that we would have had it.
So like a, something that would be a regional thing, like a hurricane or statewide thing, that could really become very problematic, right?
Speak first or you're second.
It sounds to me like we've got a serious weak point in our emergency spraying plan, as far as some sort of a backup.
Well, it is an Achilles' heel that we just have to make sure, like Pete said, the, as long as we are calling first and we're willing to pay. The problem with renting equipment is that when you walk in the door, if somebody else has already rented it, it's not there. That's why, if you will recall after, what was it, Irene, the first storm I was here for?
Yes, Irene.
We notified y'all of how many of our lift stations did not have generators. Y'all provided the money, and we now have many more generators, some of which are fixed, some of which are portable. But, you know, it's like everything else, scarce resources have to be very strategically placed.
Pete, who owns the, who owns the generator you're talking about?
Godwin, which is now Xylem.
How big is it?
It's literally a tractor-trailer, 18-wheeler tractor-trailer.
That runs one pump?
It will, it will run more than one, but you cannot start them up simultaneously because of the...
Startup amperes that it...
Start it up, let it get going, then you start up, these are, these are 400 horsepower pumps?
350 horsepower.
350 horsepower pumps, and there's six of them. If, depending on how many zones William thinks necessary to spray, you don't know how many pumps you're going to need. But the, the thinking that we have security in that 760 million gallons of storage is really not the way we need to be thinking. We need to be thinking, we need more irrigation, and we need to divert flow. And again, this is from an operator's standpoint, not, and it's my opinion, nobody else's.
Pete, can I add one thing to that?
Please. I would like to add one thing to that. That's why William watches the forecast as closely as he does. You know, as soon as the first track even turned Irma toward us, William was looking at, you know, the forecast, the forecasted track and where we were sitting relative to storage. And that's why we began emergency spraying. And we continued even after they started adjusting the track, because we did not know where it would go. And if it did hit us, and we were without power, our only guarantee was to be sitting with capacity available so that we could store after a storm until power is restored.
We are, we are a critical facility with the power company. They do give us first, first priority. But if the, if the lines on Fire Tower Road are down, they got to restore them to get power to us.
When we went through Bertha and Fran, seems to me that we found out that the base has a large amount of portable generators.
That's correct, but they're not large enough to run the effluent pumps.
They're not?
They are not. The largest generator we have that's staged at the main pump station is not large enough to run one of those pumps, including startup.
How much would some, one like that cost?
If I had to guess, rough numbers, you'd be between $250,000, $300,000. It's just not an expense that I would feel comfortable taking to management to say we need it. It's, it's...
Plus maintenance.
Yeah, plus maintenance and load testing, and it's just be one of those, you know, if you know a storm is imminent, be that first caller, because I think they have two or three of them, but usually they get spoken for very quickly.
Good presentation.
But we do have a generator for the treatment process, the headworks and everything. We have that, so we can continue that. Just as far as irrigating, we don't have a backup power plant.
Counsel, any other questions before we take a short break? We do have three other items we'd like to get through, so if you don't mind taking a very short break, we'll come back. Is that acceptable?
Thank you, guys, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. (applause) Mayor, Members of the Council, the second thing we'd like to discuss with you tonight is the Oyster Highway. Before we do that, though, we would like to take a moment to recognize a young lady for a very special award that she had. As you may know, just recently, Pat Donovan Potts was recognized as a Conservationist of the Year. This occurred at a special ceremony and it led into the discussion of the Oyster Highway. Pat's done an outstanding job for the city over the years relative to various issues with conservation, certainly dedicated to the issues of the New River. And tonight, we're going to be talking to you about a project that is part of the restoration of the New River, and it's called the Oyster Highway. Now, this is not a highway you're going to be able to drive your car on. Even if you have a good F-150, you don't want to drive on those oysters. But it's about a, what we'll call a restoration, water rehabilitation, water quality highway. And with that, Pat, please.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the recognition, but I'd be remiss without saying, without the support of the city, this project would have never taken off 20 years ago. So it's very important that you guys are here and that you support it. So to take it to the next level, um, before we can talk about what the Oyster Highway means to us today, I'd like to real quickly just briefly go over the history, and that is, 20 years ago, council, mayor, and manager made an obligation towards cleaning up the New River, and we did so through a new process called the Wilson Bay Initiative. We used restored wetlands, aeration units, stormwater mitigation, mitigation, because we got our stormwater permit then, and oysters to clean up not only Wilson Bay, but also the New River that was closed and had been closed for almost 20 years to recreational commercial uses. And we, how we did this, oysters were our biggest tool in our tool chest, and the reason why is oysters can filter, and I'm going to use conservative numbers, always have, they can actually filter 10 to 20 gallons of water every single 24 hours or every day. In the beginning, because the river was closed and Wilson Bay had so many issues, we didn't have enough dissolved oxygen on the bottom, so we had to float all of those oysters at the surface until it actually got better along the bottom. And then what we've done is if you fast forward to 2012, so we took all of those oysters that were in spat bags and chub links throughout Wilson Bay, and we actually had a collaborative partnership with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on a 206 project, where we built eight oyster reefs in Wilson Bay, six around Wilson Island, which is the circle in red, and then two in front of Bay Shore Estates, the park there, uh, that runs parallel to the bulkhead. Um, and these are about two feet below the water. Another, um, relationship and partnership that we had is when DOT replaced the Highway 17 Bridge, we made good use of that product as well. We took those large concrete, um, slabs, we took them down to Sturgeon City, the nonprofit, and we broke it up into small concrete basketball-sized pieces of rubble that were then loaded up onto a bar and taking downriver to what is known as the Old Town Point, um, which is about midway between Mil-, uh, Wilson Bay and Stones Bay. This, 10 years ago, was the only artificial reef that we had in the New River until we built our reefs, uh, three, four years ago in Wilson Bay. So that was, uh, the, it's known as AR-398. Uh, it covers, uh, about a half an acre. It is marked with buoys, and all of that rubble was put over in order to give us, uh, vertical relief in our water column, to provide an area for fish and shellfish to recruit to and create habitat within the river. So you see, uh, in your slide here, AR-398 is the red star. What I'd like to point out is Stones Bay, um, is where we find our largest natural population of bivalves or oysters. That's where it stops. The oysters can't get from Stones Bay up to AR-398 because it's too far away, and we don't have any hard substrate in the river to help them get there. Thus the idea, the Oyster Highway Project. The Oyster Highway Project is to create a ladder or stepping stones to draw the natural oyster population out of Stones Bay, back up our river where they once were very numerous. We want that to happen again. Now, why do we want to start at the bottom and move up? Because that's where our natural populations are, but more importantly, this will actually help the city. The city of Jacksonville is the only municipality on our river that has a stormwater permit, which means all of the rating or state laws that come down on that river come down on us. They don't come on, on anybody else. They come down on us, the municipality. This is our watershed, according to the Clean Water Act. And so by cleaning up downriver, we're forcing these bivalves to migrate and recruit upriver, we're cleaning that river as we go. Our goal is to get them to Wilson Bay. Not only will it improve water quality, but we're hoping that recreational and commercial fishing will also take back off, which also means economic dollars for not only the city, but the New River. We have a lot of fisheries in the Sneets Ferry area that could benefit Onslow County as well. And recreationally, I'd like to see more kayakers and more canoeers and family members playing on the river. It, the, the more oysters we have, the cleaner it will become. The partners that we have on this project is, of course, Camp Lejeune, uh, the base. We also have, uh, um, UNC Chapel Hill, the Institute of Marine Science, uh, Drs. Neil Linquist and Dr. Joel Frill. These are the funded, funders or the providers. First and foremost, of course, was the state senate bill, then we have the North Carolina Wildlife Habitat, as well as the CCA. I may point out, which is very important, the city of Jacksonville will not be giving any funding except for sta- staff time and expertise. So this is the proposed budget, um, and this is where the funds would be coming from, um, whereas the North Carolina Wildlife Habitat Foundation, which is based in Greensboro, I might add, is adding the most amount of money, and, uh, fundraising continues as we move through. Uh, with the proposed budget, what we're trying to put there are not only fish aggregation devices with the reef mini balls or oyster layer cakes, but also a new process called, uh, oyster patties, uh, which is basically almost like burlap bag that, uh, oyster spat will attach to. And we'll be putting all of those at six quarter acre reefs, those stepping stones up. Now, we do need to monitor the reef, uh, to see how successful it is, to make sure if we need to make any changes, we can, uh, but also, you know, all the other municipalities are going to want to know what we did, because they're going to want to copy us real soon. So we have to have data to show that. That monitoring, however, the funding is coming from the North Carolina Wildlife Habitat Foundation, and it will go straight to UNC Chapel Hill. It will not come through the city. So, uh, the sequence is, we would like to capture as many oyster spat as possible. Right now, the fall spawn is occurring, so building these oyster patties and putting them out as the funding comes in is our first priority, that as well as permitting. Then, as the funds continue to come in, we'll go to the second stage, which is making the reef layer cakes or mini balls and putting those out. Um, again, some caveats is, there is no obligation to the city. The only thing that we are providing is for staff, uh, time and expertise. Next steps is you guys will see me again in November, uh, to talk about budget amendments, CIP, those kinds of things to get the project approved. We just wanted to bring, uh, the project to light tonight because it's been in the news a lot. Um, they surprised me at the CCA, so it's happening a lot faster than we anticipated, um, and we wanted to make sure council was up to date. Here's the possible timeline. We are starting on the permitting now. We do have funds in place. Again, you'll hear about that in November, and again, the patty construction and deployment. And then as funds come in, we will then go with the next segment, which the reef balls. This is an example of what those quarter acres, uh, will look like, is, uh, we'll put in the 250 oyster patties, which will be stacked and also up off the bottom and in the middle of the water column, uh, which will benefit not only growth, but survivability. And in between each of these oyster patties, we will then come back in and put in the reef ball layer cakes. Uh, this will actually be a research sanctuary, so it's protected, uh, bivalves will not be able to be removed, but we are encouraging fishermen to please fish on these reefs, but to supply us with the data. What are you catching? How big are they? How many? What do they weigh? Wally was the first to, to agree to do that. So, in our future, um, what we're trying to do is pre- create, uh, the new river to what it once was before the city and the base had our wastewater treatment facilities discharging, of which we no longer are doing, we're 100% land application. So our goal is to have the cleanest river in the state.
Looks like a sheep's head fix needs some respect.
That's exactly what it is, and you are correct. Very good.[1237.83][1237.83](applause)
Counsel, what we wanted to do is brief you this evening, because this is a project that you've heard about. As Pat said, uh, we're, would open this up to questions, and then if you're supportive, we will need to begin to modify your budgets. While no city money is going to be involved, we will be the facilitator, and there will be money that will flow through the city. That will require capital improvement, project changes, and budgetary changes, which you'll see in November. Questions that you may have for Pat?
Who are all the partners involved in this?
Um, the biggest is the North Carolina Wildlife Habitat Foundation in Greensboro, and then the CCA, which is your recreational fishing group for Onslow Bay, is based out of Swansboro. But not only has, uh, Swansboro gotten involved, but National CCA is actually getting involved too. Um, they had just sent me a flyer today wanting to, uh, create a fund for this project. I think, once it happens, if you build it, they will come, and it's successful, uh, you're going to see other, other municipalities, uh, following suit.
One thing that you will notice there at the top is an Oklahoma General Assembly funding of $100,000. Uh, if I believe correctly, Senator Brown was able to put that into budget as part of the, uh, money. Also, this is not something, though, where they build it and they will come, means that the city is going to front the money and hope to get paid back. Uh, once again, the city will be the, the pipeline through which the money that has already come in will be dispensed, but there will be no city funds expended on this project. I do want to stress once again, Pat will be working outside of the corporate limits of the city. Normally, we do not do any work outside the corporate limits unless we have some type of mutual aid agreement. The justification for having staff time on a project that is outside the corporate limits, though, is what she talked about, and that is our stormwater permit. If you will remember, three months or so ago, we had a young lady who was sitting here, and she was talking about the study that she had done regarding the nitrification of the river. What happens downstream, even though it's outside the city, can help us meet our permit objectives, and that's why part of what we're asking you to authorize is for Pat to work on this project, which is technically outside the corporate limits, but we believe from a managerial standpoint, has a great potential impact to inside-city operations.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Carter?
Uh, I've worked with Pat and with Deanna, and we have an actual acknowledgement by the folks who give money or the organizations. If they give X amount of money, as Pat's indicated, the first thing to do is to, if council approves the project, is to order the patties and the poles that they go on. That's a processing that's going to take a period of time. So when this first money comes in, that money would be spent for that. But there's no assurance that any more money would come in. I know everyone's optimistic and so forth. So this acknowledgement is signed by them indicating, I'm okay with you go ahead and using this money, that I understand if there's no other money coming in, we'll have patties and sticks, but no, no way to, to get them put in or et cetera. So it's to protect the council and the city from, there's not a legal obligation, but someone coming along and say, hey, count, there's a, you know, y'all are to stick, uh, put in a couple of hundred thousand dollars. This acknowledgement is at least to say that, that there's not that responsibility, and these folks know it upfront, that this is going to be funded by the private entities, except for Pat's staff time, uh, et cetera. But I just wanted you to know.
That's been discussed with all the partners.
And they'll, they'll be signing acknowledgement of, of that. Yes, sir, we've got that drafted.
How did you pick the locations? Was it just a matter of distances and geometry?
We went downriver and actually got in and, um, searched for, uh, n- natural habitat. Um, in other words, you want a good sandy bottom in order to drive the poles in so it would hold the patties up. So we were looking for a sandy bottom. We were looking for an area that we could go by boat or by shore, um, for monitoring, uh, easy access, uh, as well as if there were any other bivalves in the area. We did find rib mussels, but we did not find oysters. If I can find rib mussels, all we need is the substrate there in order to attract the oysters. Again, it's to entice them to come up out of Stones Bay.
Other questions?
How do you, uh, how do you let them know there's some, some good places up, up river?[1530.11][1530.11](laughter)
Social media.
That's what I want.
They're going to tweet.
They will actually be able to chemically sense them. Um, the ca- calcium, calcium bicarbonate that the other oysters put out, as well as what's on the thing, they will chemically be able to smell them, and they can swim upriver too.
How about that?
That answer.[1553.57][1553.57](laughter)
Any other questions? This will be on an agenda in November to formalize.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well done, Pat. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to also ask Kerry if he will come forward and talk about some changes that we're facing regarding our recycling program. Kerry does an outstanding job in so many ways with the city. He not only, you know, operates the sanitation service, which as you're going to see tonight, gives over 1.7 million customer service pickups a year, but he's also a major asset to us in any type of hiring program and many of our policy decisions. So I'm very proud of the role that he plays with us, and Kerry, if you'll talk about recycling.
Thank you very much. Mayor Phillips and Counsel, thank you very much for letting me come and talk with you and update you a little bit about the recycling program that the city has. Um, the first slide that you see entitled Partnership in Recycling, uh, I wanted to put this up there to show everyone the participants or the, the individual organizations that help our recycling program. We've got Onslow County, Sunoco, the city of Jacksonville, and more importantly, the city residents and the businesses. In November of 2011, the, the county, uh, signed a 10-year contract with Sunoco to operate the material recovery facility. In that same year, the city signed a five-year contract with Sunoco to take our recyclables to Sunoco so they could re- so they could process those recyclables and then sell those recyclables. Our contract also had a five, one-year renewal in the contract, and we are in that second year of the renewal. One of the things that we have discussed, uh, staff, uh, recently has been recycling and the effects of recycling has as far as Sunoco is concerned. Sunoco has come with us and talked with us a little bit about the cost and the, um, expenses involved in recycling. And, and one major question that we need to reiterate is that, you know, why are we recycling? Uh, we're exci- recycling, uh, because it creates jobs. Uh, we're recycling because it's, uh, helps reduce pollution. We're recycling because it, um, you know, it stimulates the economy here in Jacksonville and provides jobs. Uh, it also helps us as far as our landfill disposal cost is concerned. We recycle about 250 tons of recycled material a month. That equates to about 3,000 tons a year, which saves us about $147,000 as far as landfill disposal costs are concerned.[1719.33][1719.33](applause) I wanted to give you a brief overview of our recycling customers in Jacksonville. Uh, we have 11,795 customers that we service as far as recycling is concerned. Out of that 11,795, 453 of those are small business customers that we include in our residential account. We have 136 commercial customers that use our roll-out containers, and we service around 300 to 350 of those roll-out containers for those customers. Those, those customers are customers that we cannot put dumpsters at their sites, so we put the roll-off containers in, at their sites so they can recycle with us. We have commercial customers that use our dumpsters. We have 77 customers now. I think initially when we started our commercial program, we had, I think, anywhere from 55, I believe, that we have. We've increased that to 77 customers now that, that do the recycling with the city of Jacksonville. That equates, again, like I said, to about 3,000, 3,000 tons. The, on the commercial side, as far as the dumpsters are concerned, that equates to about 345 tons that we collect from the commercial businesses with the dumpsters.[1794.41][1794.41](applause) What change is needed and why is change? What change is needed, and why is change needed? One of the things that we have been concerned about is the contamination in our recycling waste stream. There have been a number of items that have been in the waste stream that we need to make some effort into trying to clean up and to get out. The falling oil prices, the strong dollar, and also the weak economy in China has caused some concerns in the recycling market that we need to address in order to help, in a small way, Sunoco make some kind of profit as far as their operations are concerned. We've seen less paper in the recycling waste stream and more plastic, and the reason being is that plastic is cheap. It's cheap to make. It's easier to make new plastic than it is to recycle plastic because of the process that's involved. More and more vendors now are coming up with plastics that are lighter weight than the plastics that were normally recycled, so it takes more of that plastic to be processed, and the expense to process it costs more than it did five years ago or even 10 years ago. Contamination is a big problem. We have medical waste in the recycling containers, needles. We have wires and hoses in the recycling waste stream. We have vinyl blinds that are in the waste stream. Believe it or not, the other day, and we caught it, thank God, we had someone put used motor oil in the recycling container. You know, and these are the challenges that we have as far as the department is concerned and the program is concerned, that we're trying to adjust and to clean up and to help our waste stream as far as the recycling is concerned to be a little bit better than normal. Sunoco had indicated to us, I think, a while back, that our waste stream was about 14% of contaminated materials, which is not good, but it's a lot better than 16%, which is the national average or national standard.
And our contract actually says we cannot have more than 10% contamination.
I got a real quick question before you go on. Where do you do the separation at? Or is it done about the--
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about, too, is that the separation, we collect the recyclable single stream, and that means that everything is thrown into our recycling container, and we take it to the material recovery facility. They run it up on a conveyor belt, and they have sorters that will sort the material. When we talk about contamination, one of the problems that we have, and we went out there and we observed their operation, is that plastic bags, you know, gets caught up in the material. The wire that we talked about and the hoses and so forth like that, and the blinds and stuff, those are things that are not typical recycling material that we find in our recycling waste stream that hinders the process as far as Sunoco is concerned, because those things have to be taken out. And I think they mentioned from time to time machinery has to stop because they have to clean that stuff up and get that stuff untangled or off of the conveyor belt. So, those are things that we have to help Sunoco with in order to make the process, the processing of recyclables a little bit better.
Do we get billed back for the stuff that they have to dispose of?
Not so far, but in our recent conversations with Sunoco, what they have said is that they're about to start rejecting loads because they're contaminated, and when they do, they're going to charge us $250 per rejected load. It doesn't take long for that to add up. I will also say to you, Mr. Carter and I have reviewed the agreement. Mr. Carter did the legal review. I did the review of his legal review, and we both agreed that technically their contract does not allow that. But we are to the point where Sunoco, and I want you to understand, they are a very good company. They have been good to work with. We've had a lot of good negotiations. We're not saying that the issue is them. But they are facing market conditions where China used to take almost anything, and now China is opening up these boxes and looking at them and saying, "Nope, we're rejecting the box, you got to ship it back." It's happening across the whole country. But, Mayor, they are to the point, they're going to start charging us unless we do some things to clean up what we're sending to them.
Are we too lax on public education programs?
Probably so.
Ask people as to what they can recycle, what not?
Yeah, probably so.
I don't know how to answer some questions like styrofoam.
Well, you're going to see right now where we're headed, because we've got to do a better job of educating. So, that was a great lead-in, so--
And this is not just a Sunoco problem. This is a problem with larger, Waste Management has the same problem. Republic has the same problem, so it's not something that's just solely in this area or a problem with Sunoco. So, you know, what are we going to do to help this? And I think with Dr. Woodruff's suggestion, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to get back to basics as far as our recycling program is concerned. We're going to focus on basic materials with large recycling potential. We're going to address contamination, and part of what we're going to do, you'll see in the slide, is to train our employees to make sure that we're accepting the materials that we need to accept as being profitable and recyclable, and that process is going to start in January. These are some of the items that we're going to limit our recycling collection to, is the aluminum cans, the metal cans, cardboard. The most important thing about cardboard, you know, we have cardboard that materials are stored in, and that's fine as long as there's no wood or anything associated with it. But also, what's important and what we really need to focus on, and Mr. Bidner, you mentioned this about lax being lax, we cannot have any food contamination. If you take a pizza box, and a pizza box has some tomato sauce on it or whatever, that can, I think--
Take on the pizza.
Yeah, yeah. Just to show you how Kerry believes in political correctness. When this slide was first put together, it said, "Cardboard, no, no, no pizza boxes." He cleaned it up, so it says, "No food contamination." But I'll be quite frankly, I mean, we eat pizza at least, you know, every two weeks, and I've always thrown that pizza box in the recycling container. You probably have too.
Everybody does.
But what Sunoco has said is because it's got grease in it--
There's no grease in pizza.
Because it has various food byproducts in it. But again, I mean, see, these are the things, like Mr. Bidner said, we've got to start educating the citizens, because for the last 10 years, we basically said, "Throw it all in. When in doubt, throw it in." Those days are over, folks. We're going to the eight basic things.
How about distributing stickers to everybody when they put on a garbage can? Don't recycle this, recycle this is a lie.
Well, what we decided to do is instead of confusing people with the "don'ts," we're going to stress the "do's." And that's why what you're seeing here, our recycling program is going to eight items. If you remember the magic eight, you're good. Here are the magic eight. Kerry?
Okay. As I mentioned for you, aluminum cans, metal cans, cardboard, newspapers and magazines, glass bottles and jars, plastics from one, two, three, four, and five, not number six and number seven, and then cartons, food cartons and beverages. These things is important, too, as far as the process is concerned, that we educate customers about cleaning these things out.
Quick, shred of paper. Wow, I shred.
Real quickly, let's look at what you don't do.
Okay, these are the prohibitive items, shredded paper, plastic grocery bags, plastic bags, wire with Christmas lights. A lot of individuals in collecting of recyclables, they bag their recyclables.
Don't do that anymore.
Real quick question, Kerry, on your commercial, going back to your commercial, what are you doing with your brown glass? I understand that that's not recyclable material.
Well, it is recyclable material, however, it's not profitable recycling material.
So, they will take it?
But we--
They have to take it by state law.
Well, we're taking it because it's part of the ABC, that those individuals have to recycle their glass. So, yes, we're still going to take those.
Let me also address that. One of the things we have talked to the people at the state level, I still call them "deener," and Rob Taylor, who is the director of recycling for the state of North Carolina. On the colored glass, one of the issues is that the processing plant that has the great big furnace that melts the glass as it is basically ground up at that point, but that processing plant, its big furnace has reached its life cycle. When you turn it on, you don't turn it off for 20 years because it's at such high temperature. You bring it up, and it just keeps working. One of those big furnaces in Wilson is down, and that has caused a significant year-long backlog of the ability to process colored glass. What Rob Taylor has told us from the state level is that that company is in the process of replacing that furnace. It's going to take about a year to replace it, because we're not talking about just, you know, something you pull off a truck and plug in. So, in about a year, that furnace will be up and running, and when that happens, we will start seeing a better market for recycled colored glass. But until that happens, it's simply being stockpiled, and that's one of the financial challenges that Sunoco is facing, is they're having to pay for all of this glass that's being stockpiled. And remember, like Kerry said, the ABC permit requires every one of the restaurants that's serving alcohol and beverages to recycle that. They require us to pick it up. They require Sunoco to accept it. But that's something. Now, looking again, shredded paper, but here, let's go on with the rest of the list.
Okay, we've got needles, clothing, styrofoam, mirrors, ceramics, appliances, batteries, auto parts, cooking pots and pans, light bulbs, mini blinds, and yard waste, bucket waste. And believe it or not, we've not just put this up there just to put it up there, we have had these things in the recycling waste stream. No household garbage. And here on this slide, these are some of the educational things that we're going to do and launch in 2018 in order to try to get our recycling waste stream a little cleaner, a little better, and get people more educated in what's recyclable and what's not recyclable. We're starting tonight with the workshop. In November, December, in the utilities bills, we're going to put some information in the utility billing for our residential customers. We're going to get on social media, G10 and the newspaper placements, in order to inform individuals about what is recyclable and try to better educate the public. A vibrant web presence, Jacksonville Connect, we're going to use that. We're going to train staff, which we're going to be in the process of doing shortly. We're going to use door hangers to notify customers of improper material that they've placed out for collections, and then outreach events in order to inform customers and to help, again, better educate the customers about recycling.
And Mr. Bidner, you have one that we did not think of, and that's getting some stickers that we can put on every container so that before you lift that lid, you see the eight things. Again, we're not going to try to tell you what you can't do. We're going to try to tell you what you can do. If you can remember the eight basic things, then we think we can clean up the recycling stream here.
Yeah, and one of the, I'm sorry.
Thanks for the idea.
Yeah, and one of the things that I did not mention on the slide, but Wally brought it to my attention, which is so true, we have mobile 3-1-1 now, and the guys that we have on the routes with the mobile 3-1-1, they can identify individual customers that need probably further education as far as recycling is concerned. So, those will be used also so that we can make better progress in educating our customers.
Come January, we are going to implement this. Come January, your phone's going to be ringing, and so is mine, because people are going to say, "Hey, your crews came by and didn't pick up my recycling." That means that for the next 60 days, we have to do a job of educating our residents. We accept that responsibility because we don't want your phone ringing. But there will be phone calls where somebody says, and we're going to have to say, "Well, the reason why is because you had pizza boxes in there, or you had all of your recycling in a plastic bag, or you put your Christmas lights in." So, again, it's the basic eight things that we're going to start recycling.
Now, I understand why my pizza boxes are in my yard after trying to make up. That makes more sense.
I put a plastic milk carton. It's got the little circle on it, but it's got a little milk in it, so you're--
That's good.
That's violation. That's good?
That's good.
What about, okay, I changed the oil. The oil can's got a little thing on it, you know, it's got residue in them. That's good?
No, sir. Because the oil is hazardous material.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but the thing says it's a recyclable container.
I understand that, but it's not. It's not, because they're not going to take it. They're simply going to discard it into the garbage because of the hazardous material residue in the plastic. And another thing, too, I mean, this is a simple thing, and it's a small thing, and a lot of people don't know this, you know, the tops of, let's say, your oil, that's not recyclable. It's a different cap that you put on there. The cap is not recyclable.
You see the caps over there on the cocoa container?
Yes, sir.
The bottle is recyclable, the cap is not.
Yeah.
Most people wouldn't know that.
We don't know that.
Yeah.
Well, again, we've been fortunate that we have lived through decades of recycle everything. Ron is our recycling detective. And what he has done recently is to go around to our own containers in our offices to see what we are throwing away. And the amazing thing is he came back to me and he said, "Hey, we met the enemy, and he is us. We're contaminating the waste stream as bad as anybody else, so we got to educate the public, got to educate our own employees, but we're going to do this."
Yeah, and part of the challenge also is more of a major challenge, too, is manufacturers that make these containers, you know, we have to get them on board with making material that's recyclable, that can be easily disposed of as far as the recycling process is concerned and not expensive to recycle. When in doubt, last thing, do not place it in a recycling container, check the website, call the sanitation department.
Thank you. We're very close on time, so at this point, we're not going to do the ITS event. What we're going to do, though, is just give you just 30 seconds of this. We know that the league had, North Carolina League of Municipalities had a fire, and it really put their program down. In the next workshop, Chris Coltik is going to show you the mission that the manager's office has given him to prepare what we call an event recovery program. We have to make sure that if something catastrophic happens to us, that we still can get water and sewer bills out, we can get paychecks run, we can get, we can get, we can get. What Chris will share with you at the next workshop, and I apologize to him that he didn't get to do this tonight, he will share with you Chapter One of a multi-phase approach so that we can be operational again if something catastrophic happens to us. Two last things that we'd like to confirm. We discussed with you the changing or adding of one of our advisory, let me do it again. Currently, we have an advisory committee that's called Community Development Advisory Committee. We want to confirm on the record that you're authorizing us to have a new advisory group called the Community Engagement Advisory Committee, and that CDAC, Community Development Advisory Committee, will become a subset of that. Are you comfortable with that decision? Especially Mr. Willingham, you're the liaison.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, John, there was one other--
Car camera grant.
Yes. Are you comfortable with us going ahead and filing for a car camera grant? The money is already budgeted for our 50% match.
You don't need a motion, a full motion or anything.
Just a consensus.
Consensus? Is there a consensus on that?
With that, I commend the staff. I think you can see the level of competency that your staff has in these presentations, not only what Kerry does, what Greg, what all of these folks do.
Very professional.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion.